Order a meeting of the Laramie Planning Commission for September sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Clerk roll call please.
Evans. Madam Moore.
Here.
Isaac White.
Here.
Otul.
Here.
Priscillik.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
And Moody.
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
Okay, approval of agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as presented? Do we have a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jake, second. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, agenda as, as presented. There are no minutes associated with, with this and this meeting. So next is citizen comments on any non-agenda related topics. No action can be taken. Is there anybody out there that wants to talk about something? Seeing none, we'll move on to planning commission and staff reports, comments. Philip and Joe, anything you want to say?
Just one announcement again and reminder that we're doing this month, we're doing a public engagement at the farmer's market. You should have received an email from Robin, the department coordinator about next Friday, not this coming, but the twenty seventh, where you all will be featured at the farmer's market. We will be there as well, but we've already done it twice this month. Really good turnout. Obviously, the farmer's market and a lot of people coming to engage. So if you haven't signed up for that yet, I'd check the inbox and, and give an hour or so of your time to really get the word out about the planning commission and, and what we all do.
When, when you say the inbox, is there, is there a sign up for specific times during?
Yeah. Chair, Robin Despain, you should have an email from her coordinating the effort, but.
Okay.
Um, Philip, I'll be gone, but I'm volunteering my slot at Chris.
Okay, so that puts you down for two.
There must be another Chris in here.
Puts you down for two hours.
Yeah, what the heck? Um, thanks, Donald. I appreciate your generosity.
I know you'd do the same for me. I would.
Um, there was a, um, email about correspondences or something, some new protocol for emails.
Mr. Chair, uh, we are, from what I was talking to the IT people today, trying to figure out how to do this and we all have to have city emails with two-part authentication so that there is records of all official correspondence. And it's, it's part of keeping state records and municipal records.
But do, so we have to have like a outlook? It's, it's done.
Yeah, go through Outlook. Yeah, it's fairly simple. Once, me, I'm as dumb as a poster when it comes through, uh, uh, internet stuff, but you get, click on the link on the email they sent you, Outlook Express thing comes up. You put in the, uh, your, the email at cityoflaramie.org. And then they, they gave you a password. All you have to do is change the password. And don't get, go down the rabbit hole of getting an app for your phone. Just click on send me text. You know, and they'll notify you with the two-part authentication because before you can get into the email, you have to enter an authentic, find it authentication number. It's a big pain in the butt, but.
What if you don't want to be on Outlook?
Well, you could resign. I don't know. I don't know. I'm not on Outlook, so that's.
You know, I.
That's right. Took me forever. But you don't have to buy Outlook. You just have to get on this and click on, follow the links. And if you call them up, they'll help you through it if you're having a hard time with it.
Oh, the, the city?
The city, IT people.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Tom, did you, I have a quick question. You said you sent out information. If so, I don't believe I received it.
You don't think if you're, you should have. Anybody on the planning commission should have got it. It was supposed to have been sent to all members of all boards and commissions.
Do you have any idea when that was?
No, I, I don't because I was out of the country, so I just am waiting through hundreds of emails.
For about like a two weeks, within the last two weeks?
Yes, within the last two weeks.
Okay.
It was sent out by Tracy Williams on Friday, September thirteenth significantly enough.
That would explain it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a record of that, so perhaps I'll reach out. Maybe one of you could forward it to me and I can follow up with her. I didn't get that, so somehow I was left off.
Sure, I'll, I'll forward it to you. I think, do I have your email? I should have your email because you get the, get the ones from Philip, so I've got you on the list there somewhere.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, we can follow up too. I don't know if it was only sent to people's Outlook emails, in which case, I don't know if, um, if Jana, yours, your email is a university email, I'm not sure, but technically, we all should be using the Outlook email that was assigned to you when you came on, I believe.
Whatever email you put on your application to apply for the board, that's what we send it to.
Right. Which may or may not have anything to do with Outlook.
Yeah.
Right.
So whatever you originally applied for the board, that's the one you would check because that's the one that we gave to our IT department.
But they're requiring us to do something more.
Okay, just let me know who I should follow up with. I didn't get that email. I'm looking at that account now, so just let me know who to follow up with and I'll do that.
So, so Philip or Ryan, you guys will do that as opposed to Tom?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I sent it to her.
Oh, you're. For Donald.
I sent it, I sent it to her Gmail account.
Okay, but you have to have the correct password that came in an individual email to you, so to let them follow up on it and they'll get you the password that you have, temporary password you have to enter.
Thanks, Tom. Joe?
Uh, Chair, um, just out of curiosity, Jana, are you the only one that did not get the email or is there anyone else who needs the email resent to them? Because I'm Teams messaging. Okay, so I'll, I'll ask for John's to be resent to just in case. And then, um, Commissioner Isaac White as well. I will. Those are the two that I have right now.
You'll hear from us if we find out we're not.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Joe. Um, any, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move over to disclosures, exportate communications, potential conflicts of interest on the item that we have on the agenda. Seeing none, um, so, uh, uh, old business, uh, in front of us is FP dash twenty-four dash zero four, Grandview Heights Estates Phase One Final Plat. Mister, uh, Albreth.
Yes, indeed, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. The item before the planning commission today, Grandview Heights Estates Phase One Final Plat. This proposal includes twenty lots for single-family residential development as well as two multifamily lots located in the R three multifamily residential zone with the Grandview Heights PUD and Turner Tract Overlay Zone. Property situated south of Bill Nye Avenue, east of Glacier Street, and west of Boulder Drive. The original Grandview Heights preliminary PUD and plat were approved by City Council two thousand and six, followed by six final plat filings that developed two hundred and seventy-two single-family homes, both attached and detached, along with thirteen point six, six acres of open space and associated improvements, including trails, landscaping and irrigation systems. The developer has also made two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars contributions towards open space development and the developer is here. The applicant slash developer is here as well, uh, Mister, um, John Edwards and a representative from the Overland Group, Austin Cack as well. Um, in two thousand and thirteen, a revised planned unit development and preliminary plat were approved, expanding the land south of Bill Nye Avenue and adding open spaces, trails, and a storage unit com- commercial component near Vista Drive. The revised plans received final approval in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and twenty. Additional amendments increased the number of lots south of Bill Nye Avenue from forty-four to fifty-six, single-family home lots, and two larger multifamily lots, which enabled an affordable housing project to be fund, or to be envisioned and hopefully funded, or it is funded by the Wyoming Community Development Authority, W C D A Tax Credit Program, which is specifically designed to encourage the development of affordable housing in Wyoming by providing federal tax credits to developers. And this is partly the reason we're having a special meeting on this final plat tonight is because full approval of this final plat, um, is required by the applicant in order to be able to be, you know, for the funding to come through essentially, and I'll let them, the applicant and the representative of Overland speak to that. Just to highlight a couple of other things, uh, there was initially some discussion about this project, but it is not within the Casper Aqua for Protection Overlay Zone, therefore, um, does not pose any concerns related to Aqua for Protection. As far as the Parks and Rec Master Plan go, I've gone over these, this a little bit. Um, as far as open space that has been dedicated and parking Lou fees that have already been received from previous filings. This final plat, um, has a parking Lou fee of sixty-four thousand, eight hundred, forty-five dollars of in-lou fees that the city has and developer have agreed upon through the, um, calculation and city code that is associated with parking Lou fees for the twenty lots. Street layout, uh, the street access and layout in this final plat remain consistent with previous planned unit development and preliminary plat approvals. The local streets running through this new subdivision, which include Big Sky Trail, Sitting Bull Trail, and Red Cloud Trail will be constructed to a narrower width of fifty feet, well, fifty feet of right-of-way, which is narrower than the sixty feet, um, usually required, and that was approved through the preliminary, um, plat process. Uh, parking on one side and sidewalks on both sides. That's what was ultimately approved by City Council. Um, this layout ensures ample pedestrian access connecting to existing pathways and parks in the area. The traffic studies confirm that the development's impact on the existing road network will be negligible with all intersections maintaining acceptable levels of service and no additional improvements to Bill Nye Avenue are necessary. As with any final plat, all conditions of the preliminary plat need to be met, and those are all met here in the final plat that's presented. And, and they need to be, or else we couldn't recommend that this board recommend City Council approval. Public input was solicited. We sent mailers out to people within three hundred feet of the proposed subdivision as well as advertising the newspaper and the properties posted as well. We have received no public comment to date. Therefore, our recommendation is that this body move to recommend approval for City Council of this final plat. And that is my presentation. I invite the chair to invite the applicant up as well, and I also stand for questions.
Any questions?
So this is an idle curiosity question. Uh, so this is on page seven. Uh, two, one, two, three, fourth paragraph. So, um, the final plat would require one point two nine acres of land to be dedicated or an in-lou fee amount of sixty-four thousand dollars, and if my math is correct, uh, that means that, uh, the in-lou fee is, provides fifty thousand dollars per acre for, uh, you know, for open, uh, parks or open land, correct? Does fifty thousand dollars actually buy an acre of land in the city, or is it way off?
Honorable Chair through you. So the way this is calculated, you can see there, I mean, to your direct question, I mean, most likely not, right? I mean, and we're but there's more to it than when we calculate a parking Lou fee. I mean, it's based on the, um, what's in the area and this preliminary, or this final plat is in Service Area Twelve of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, which has, if you've been down that way, lots of trails, lots of amenities, a new Rotary Park is going in right there, so that's kind of the decision of whether to require open space or go with the parking Lou fee. So the in-lou fees are more of, it's thought of maintaining what's already there rather than purchasing land.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Uh, just further to go down the rabbit hole, how much has, do you have a, any idea of how much this developer has paid in previous payments for the preliminary and other, because you said that sixty-two thousand is like the last, and I think he's put in quite a bit of money in lieu of fees over the years. Do you have that total?
Honorable Chair through you, yes. Um, it is, it is, the, the number is in the staff report, what, what this developer has already paid in previous Grandview Heights uh, filings, and that, that number is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
As well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, as well as fourteen acres of open space as well.
Um, so a, a couple of questions. So in, in the preliminary plat, and you said here that, that it was a fifty-foot right-of-way, what was approved was a fifty-foot right-of-way with one side for parking, but what's in, in here on page, um, six, it says, um, all streets within the final plat will be local streets within a fifty-foot right-of-way and parking on both sides of the street. And then there's language in the, in the, um, I, item two I, roadways, there, there's a correction of what was agreed to in the preliminary plat to allow parking on both sides of the street. So could you kind of, could you explain the one side versus two side and what we're actually approving for this, uh, final plat?
Yes, Honorable Chair. So as, as this body made the recommendation of parking on one side, City Council ultimately heard the item, saw the conditions, amended the conditions to be parking allowed on both sides. So in a nutshell, um, this body is able to make recommendations and then City Council can see those recommendations and they were the ones that they, that body essentially altered it to what it is, what the conditions reflect in, in this staff report.
For both sides. They, they took our recommendation and changed it.
Yes.
Um, do you, do you recall what the, um, the justif- the technical justification was to allow both sides, uh, to allow parking? Was it the traffic, the traffic survey or what, what, what was the, the feeling of, of council?
Honorable Chair, I would let the applicant speak to that.
Okay.
I know there, there was some discussion, but ultimately it was decided that given it was a residential road, low traffic, uh, low speed, that parking on both sides could be supported.
And I, I recall something about it, like there would be an HOA that would say no recreational vehicles to be parked.
Honorable Chair, yes. He, uh, the applicant could speak to that as well, but yes, that, that already is in effect.
Alright, good. Um, one, one other question. So, um, there's reference to a drainage plan, and I asked this question earlier in, in the, in the preliminary plat. So, so the drainage, storm water and stuff coming off of parking surfaces is going to drain into Rotary Park. The, the property to the east that is now owned by the city, and that there's a detention pond that's, that's going to be in Rotary Park to, to deal with that. In, in other words, there, there's a drainage plan reference, but we never saw it. And, and whether that comes out in the wash during whatever plating, final plat for that Rotary Park is, if there is any, because or whether there's storage associated with that.
This was in the Turner Tract and a discharge to that main.
The, e- e- everything in the, in the prior, um, north of Bill Nye went, went north. But on this particular piece of property, the drainage goes south.
Honorable Chair, yes. Drainage for this final plat drains to the south and east through the city park and eventually south into the county. And, um, it does, I mean, i- i- it's been reviewed by engineering. It meets, it meets city requirements, um, as well as the requirements set forth in the PUD and.
I- i- is that something that we'll ever see as, as a body as to what go, what goes on in, in Rotary Park that is receiving impact from, from this development?
Honorable Chair, it's, it's certainly, I mean, Rotary Park, as you all know, is, I mean, they're breaking ground and, and that site plan's been approved as well, reviewed by the city, uh, public work staff. I can certainly get you the drainage plan and the site plan for that, but it's, it's been reviewed and approved.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, just trying to fill out my, my, my ignorant scaps of how, how drainage is dealt with and detention ponds, um, from developments. And in this case, it's going to city property and, and how, how the city deals with taking effluent from storm water off of a development and then discharging it into the county. And how I understood it was that the detention pond or whatever is being designed in Rotary Park is to maintain, ensure historic flows off-site.
Right.
And so there's no, there's no volume, um, theoretically, no volume impact to the county. Um, is there a water quality impact? Is, is that, is that something that this, I mean, and, and because, because I think the city should always, should start in collecting water quality data from detention ponds to see whether, you know, that, that non-point discharge, you know, everyone talks about water quality and does nothing about it. And, and just kind of curious whether the city in that Rotary Park plan can address, you know, start to collect some water quality data as to what, what comes off of these, these, um, paved surfaces and what goes into detention ponds and what comes out of them.
Honorable Chair, the comment is noted, and I, I'll just, for everybody's information, I mean, the city does apply for site plans, uh, just like anybody else when they develop property. This case was no different. Uh, the city, city staff reviewed the site plan for the Rotary Park, um, the drainage plan as well, which as you mentioned, the, the flow of storm water off the property couldn't increase from historic, um, flows. So that all was reviewed and, and approved, and, um, I have to take the water quality comment under, um, because I, I need to reach out for information on that.
It's something that, that, you know, spiraled out of the storm water, um, focus group and one of the issues of how to do a better job of, of, uh, of, of addressing storm water discharge. So I think it's, you know, something just to keep in the frontal, frontal lobes of going biz going forward.
Noted, yes.
Any other questions, Donald?
What about the parking situation on Bill Nye?
Honorable Chair through you, um, as I s- as the preliminary plat shows, uh, it, it looks like, and I, I know we don't have a site plan for the multifamily development, which is proposed, um, on block, or, uh, lot one there, the eastern multifamily lot. But it's our understanding that all the parking is going to be internal to that site. So, I mean, we're not going to see, I know for the upcoming Rotary Park, there is going to be some parking on Bill Nye, um, as part of that site plan, but we don't anticipate seeing any, um, parking. I mean, because for a multifamily development anyways, there's required parking per unit, and so all that will be internal to the site.
I, I, I thought there was language saying that there was going to be no parking signage on Bill Nye.
Yeah, that may well be a condition, yes. I, there's.
But I may have.
Yes, indeed. Condition one E. Well, that's driveway access.
Um, F, provide no, a no parking plan for Bill Nye Avenue that shall include no parking, stripping, and necessary signage. Two, two, two.
Two F, yeah.
That's at the end?
Y- yes, that the issues that were addressed in the final plat for the preliminary plat.
Got it. Okay, yep, I missed that. Thank you.
Sure. And any other questions on, is seeing none? Um, is the applicant, uh, please come up and thanks, thank you for, for being here. Appreciate it.
Sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the City Planning Commission. My name is John Edwards. I'm with the Grandview Heights Development Group. And first, Mr. Chair, members of Planning Commission, those online, I, I first want to thank you all back for agreeing to have this special meeting. This is critical for purposes of the forty-two unit apartment complex that's slated to go on the largest of the two multifamily lots in, in this first filing. Uh, part of, as, as was mentioned in the opening remarks from Philip, by the way, Philip, thank you for those remarks, uh, very accurate. As part of the requirements of the funding allocated to the Overland Group for this apartment project, there's certain requirements. One of those is they have to stay on a certain construction schedule. And the willingness of, of this body to have this meeting tonight allows for the potential for a final City Council reading tomorrow night. And will allow the Overland Group then to stay on their fall construction schedule, which includes certain critical concrete elements, mainly footers, things associated with the foundation that they can get done before the frost sets in the ground, so they can continue on with the, the vertical construction component. Um, most of the things, uh, that could be said about this project, excuse me, have already been said, so with respect to everyone's time, I, I won't go over everything that we discussed during the preliminary plat and, uh, PUD amendment stages for this. Uh, a, a quick recap of, of what we're planning for this, what will be the first phase of this Grandview Heights Estates area. As was noted, it consists of two larger multifamily lots that are right off of Bill Nye, and as was noted, there will be no parking allowed on Bill Nye. All of that will be internal, uh, for the Overland Group. Uh, the other multifamily lot, from our review and study of the market, we felt that it was a wise decision to provide a space for an additional multifamily project of some sort. Uh, we don't know what that is at this moment in time. It's essentially a, a blank canvas for, for the community. We do plan to do some outreach to some folks. Uh, the Overland Group has also expressed a, a desire, whether it pans out or not, to potentially do a second phase of development here in Laramie at, at some point. So consists of those two multifamily lots and then twenty of what we refer to generally as cottage lots, uh, scaled down, single-family home lots, detached structures, uh, but they were also carefully designed to also accommodate townhomes and twin homes. So this size of lot and their configuration will accommodate those three different types, which fall within different price points. And adding that to the highest density use, the apartment use, we feel that we've made a good faith effort at getting at the heart of the current. Affordable housing need in Laramie. Uh so with that said, again, folks, I I just wanted to thank you very much, uh it was already noted, this this area is in it existing R three zone. So not only do we feel that it it meets the affordable housing need, but it also is is in line with with predecessors. City planning predecessors, uh things of the like. Uh there are a total of twenty of these cottage townhome twin home lots in addition to the two multifamily lots. And with that said, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, uh any questions from commissions commissioners?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Tom?
I'd just like to say this is something that Laramie needs really, really badly, so. Keep it up, and if you can keep your other people and partners invested in Laramie would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, thank you, sir, and we're we're proud to offer this to the community, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, best of uh good luck when 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 we finish this up.
Thank you all again, sincerely for your time, those online, thank you.
Alright, um. Is there anyone in the public uh that wants to comment on this um on this item? Seeing none, any final uh discussion comments from commission amongst ourselves? Seeing none, is there a motion on the floor?
Take it away, Don. I'm rusty.
He is rusty, uh I move to recommend approval of the City Council. The uh Grand View Heights Estates Phase One Final Plat based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Matamore, um any discussion again? Seeing none, uh roll call vote.
Evans?
Yes.
Matamore?
Yes.
Isner White?
Yes.
Otul?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
And Moody?
Yes.
Uh seven yeses and zero noes.
Okay, motion passes, um Mr. Edwards and all, good luck and thank you very much for making this happen, appreciate it. Um.
Bravest more.
Alright, seeing nothing else on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn from? Second uh out there from.
Second.
Donald, um all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay. Alright, we are adjourned as Laramie Planning Commission. Thanks everyone for showing up.